Okay, I'd like to welcome you to November's Town Hall meeting. Again, we do these every month to try to help with command messaging, answering questions of the community, and getting information out. Again, these slides are posted up on the NTC webpage every single month, and they're actually stockpiled, so if you feel like it, you want to go back and see the August Town Hall, you can. And so, again, our goal is to answer any questions that you have. We're going to move swiftly today as we've got Thanksgiving meal to serve, and so we're going to try to finish very punctually. Next slide. Okay, the agenda? Next slide. Okay, old business, one comment: Thanksgiving donations. We have been given very generously from two primary benefactors, three overall, from the communities and gifts that can be used for our soldiers and our families that have a greater need during the holidays. In particular, the Military and Civilian Spouses Club donated generously, as well as the four families of active military private organization. And so, I've sent out an email personally last Thursday to all commanders, that is, the MSC commanders and those Command Service Majors. If you have not already gone and picked up those donated baskets and/or cards to the commissary, I encourage you to do so today at Building 1317. See Ms. Autumn Gonzalez or Ms. Sonia Bonet Betancourt. There, you can see them, and they will hand those out to you, and you can take those and hand those out to your soldiers and families. We didn't have enough to go to 100%, but we got most of them covered, and then relying on the commands to decide how to distribute those within the units. So please make sure to do that. We don't want to go to waste. Next slide. Next slide. Okay, want to talk through real quick a couple things. My favorite topic: water billing. Okay? Y'all's favorite topics as well. We're going live. You should have received a notification for all tenants in the housing. We sent out a letter signed by the villages in Fort Irwin and Michael's Management Services. We have delayed this by several months over time because we wanted to make sure we got it right. We want to make sure we did all of the repairs possible in the community. And so, live water billing will start in January. That means your January consumption will be charged in your February bill. We have seen significant improvements over time. We've gone from 52 dwelling units over $200 had they received a bill, the worst one up at $2,784 if we built live back in the July timeframe. It is now down to 15 units, okay? So we've seen it drawn down more and more, 52 to 47 to 42 to 34, down to 15 units. And we're going to continue to stay on this. I've talked with the project about the fact that toilets go out, faucets start leaking, the meters on the housing units break down over time. And so, next slide, and we'll come back to this. This little flyer in the upper left, which may be a little bit hard to read on here, was sent to you in your email from the project, along with a letter notifying that live water billing will begin in January with the first bill due in February. Again, to refresh memory, we build from the 15th, excuse me, the 16th through the 15th of the month. So you've got really two more months of freebie. I say that, please, don't squander the water that we're giving you, because bottom line is what we're trying to do is increase conservation mindedness in the community. By the way, I'll tell you, our averages have been driving down much lower and lower, and that's the goal here. RCI and the project and MMS do not want your money. You get an allocation based on average consumption, but the goal here is that nobody has to pay a bill. And so, we're seeing it continue to decrease in overall usage, because people are doing exactly what we're asking them to do, which is be more conservation minded. But I asked the project at the regional conference that we did last week to come up with a flyer to give tips to our tenants that can tell them what they can do to reduce their costs or reduce their consumption. And so, there's a lot of tips here. I recognize we've got a lot of new home occupants, young soldiers that have never had to maintain a home. And so, this little flyer tells you how much water you can waste by ignoring that running toilet, 300 gallons a day. That's how much it can be. And so, we encourage you to get this out to as many people as possible. We send it to every tenant in the email address that we have. I got mine as a tenant yesterday, okay? And so, we encourage you to share this and encourage folks to be more conservation minded, okay? There are some pointers here. Our goal has been to go online, if you recall, by October, but we kept delaying it because we want to get more of the outliers with broken equipment, damaged equipment repaired. But we also know it's going to continue to have mean failures over time that we're going to have to address. And so, whenever you have a doubt, whenever you have a question, all you've got to do is come in and see the project right here at the Sandy Basin office, and they'll make sure to get somebody out there, okay? Any questions about that? All right, go back one slide. I'll turn it over to Stacy to talk about some of the other points on here.
Good morning. I'm Stacy with the Department of Support Irwin, the family housing. In addition to what Colonel Taylor just told you, we are putting a lot of different flyers on our website that have conservation tips, not only for water, but for electric, the vampire electronics and everything. So please go on there. We also have some in our lobby if you want to come take a look at them. We will begin stump grinding in December. I know a lot of you have dead trees that were cut down, and you have just a stump locked in your yard, and we will start grinding out all of those to be rid of them next month. DPW's domestic water pipe replacement project started this month, and it will go on through January. It is just for crackerjack flats, excuse me, but they will be closing roads and shutting off water. So there will be notes posted by the contractor on the door, so you know when to be aware of this. The biggest problem is, again, the roads, so please pay attention. And if the water is shut off, again, that's DPW. I don't know who to contact, so you would have to get with them and those contractors.
Good news is, I know who to contact. He's sitting right behind you, CH2M. The flyer that's on the NTC webpage, if you know useful tips, will show you exactly who to call. The work order can be called in by Garrison Operations Center, and that'll get CH2M bill out to your location where it's repaired. We do have some programmed water allergies that we're going to discuss here momentarily. Go ahead, Stacy.
We will do the Do It Yourself workshop on December 16th at 10:00 at 5108 Sweetwater. We are also going to do a holiday decorations contest. Everybody, we're looking for you all to let us know who you think has the best decorated yard in your house, and we will be doing 80 gift cards for first, second, and third place winners. So please let us know who you would like to nominate. And then, we will be closing early tomorrow, about 1:00, and we will also be closed on Thursday and Friday. We will have maintenance tech on duty, so if you have any questions about anything at the house, have any issues, please call. We have stockpiled some appliances, just in case you have refrigerators, so bring those out while you're trying to cook your Thanksgiving dinner. So please give us calls to us. Any questions? Thank you.
Good morning. How are you? It was a novelated project to replace domestic water lines, and the fact that the flood is on now. And there are a few slides on this briefing, and they are mainly to inform you what time they will be in your area. The water will be off maybe maximum for one day in your area. Please coordinate accordingly. We will post the signs, and we will have the numbers available also. It's a normal number for your end breakdown. Call the work order number, and they will respond back right away. If nothing else, then my number is posted over there. So give us a call, and we can respond to any question. Go ahead, please. Move this slide up. Yeah, this is, we are working in the seven sections of, this is by the way, phase one of replacing the domestic water lines, because there were too many breaks, and the roads are becoming bumpy because of that, so this will fix all of that. This is the phase one, and the phase one includes the seven sections for the cracked jack flats. The phase two is already awarded, but it will be initiated after this is completed. So the repair work will go from 16th November to first week of January, and hopefully it will be smooth operation, and after that, the breaks will reduce to minimum, and we'll be able to settle better. Please rotate all the slides. These are the areas that you see, that this is the area where they will be starting the first, next slide, and this is the second. Keep going through the slides, and the next slide, and next slide, and next slide, next slide, next. And this is the overall schedule for this project. And again, as I said, if you have any questions, give us a call, and we will be able to respond to any questions you have. You will be notified, and there will be signs hanging on your door also. Your area will be served maybe within one day, and please store some water for that day. Drinking water spigot will still be on. Only the domestic water will be off. But it can happen that during the phase, that line is broken also, but we will fix that right away, and we will let you know on that. And the schedule is weather dependent. If some bad weather comes, we may have to re-announce this and revisit the schedule, but right now, this is the schedule we're working on. Any questions, please?
Now, ladies and gentlemen, you've been seeing, we've all been seeing, the repair of our 16-inch water pipes on the posts, on the main lines. Those are areas that we can close off and reroute, so you've seen no impact to the water consumption over the last about a month and a half. But there are some areas where there's no redundancy. And so, in the crackerjack flats area in particular, we're concerned about the amount of seepage that we're having that's causing those potholes. I've had a lot of people saying, "Why can't we fix the potholes in crackerjack flats?" Well, we have, and we keep fixing, and then the water causes breakdown underneath the dirt, and it causes more problems. So we've got to fix the source of the problem, and that's why we put some money into it. Again, prioritization is going to be to the life, health, and safety concerns here on this post. Unfortunately, there are portions of crackerjack flats we'll have to do without water for a day. We will keep this list updated and posted on the NTC webpage if we do have any weather-induced changes that we have to make, or God forbid, a drilling takes longer because we tap into something we didn't need to tap into, and that does happen. But our goal is to never let that happen. So please get the word out to our crackerjack flat tenants. Again, we're going to do door-to-door hangers on this one, because they lose water for between 16 and 24 hours as we do that repair, okay?
By the way, this is, this replacement of this pipe, we can close the lateral to your home, so that's why there was no alternator available, so we have to do this. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry to introduce you with the Director of Emergency Services, Bill Lieutenant Colonel Swenson, who became father again last night. First thing I want to talk about is car seat checks. So the Director of Emergency Services, we have a couple individuals that are certified through the National Highway Transportation and Safety Administration that can take a look at your car seats. And disregard the date on the slide, but adjust the date to the right one day because the air should change responsibility. But on the 17th of December, from 11:00 to 15:00 in the PX parking lot, we'll have some individuals set up out there to inspect your car seats. We've noticed about four out of five individuals have car seats that are installed improperly inside vehicles, all right? So we want to make sure that you're taken care of. Also, if you want to, you don't have to wait until the 17th of December. You can come up to the Director of Emergency Services at any time, phone 334, Mr. Tom Box, who works in our Physical Security Section. He can come out and take a look at your car seats, make sure that they're properly installed. Next thing I want to put out is, as we enter into the holiday season, make sure that we're closing and securing our garage doors. Predators find a way to get in there, but they see the garage door open, and folks are gone, they like to get in there and take a look around. We know everybody likes to go shopping over the holiday season, so it's an invite for those that want to get in and do some shopping on their own. If you're leaving for the holidays, make sure you give us a call. We can come by your doors and make sure that we're doing security checks, and fill out a sheet at the MP station. We'll get your name, the phone number and stuff, and give you a call if we find anything that seems to be abnormal, to make sure that everybody's taken care of. And the last thing I want to head up on is fire safety. Make sure that you're checking the batteries and stuff in your fire alarms, and as you're buying the Christmas trees, make sure you're keeping the Christmas trees watered, and you're plugging all those lights for your facilities into outlets. Make sure that you practice safety and you're not daisy chaining outlets and stuff like that. So if you have any questions, give us a call. Does anybody have any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Sorry to interrupt, President. Tonight, the Warriors Zone is hosting a nine-ball tournament. For those who don't know what nine-ball is, it's a pool tournament. There is going to be first and second place winners, and there's going to be a pool queue with cases for the first place winner. And we will be supporting, BOSS will be supporting that event with a cookout. We don't have any volunteers yet, but we do need volunteers to help with that cookout. On the 2nd of December, we are going to have our company, BOSS, ready. I encourage you to allow your soldiers to attend this meeting with as much participation so that we can put out information, and that's at the Warriors Zone at 10:00. On the 5th of December, we will be hosting a trip to Big Bear, a ski trip. So far, we have 15 soldiers that have signed up, and tomorrow is the last day for that sign up. On the 12th of December, in support of the Winter Fest, BOSS will be running a game booth, and also we will be selling hot dogs, and we will need volunteers for that as well. On the 25th of December, which is Christmas morning, we will be going to Barstow, to the Senior Citizens Center, and we will be supporting their Meals on Wheels. We did that two years ago, and we took about nine people, and it was pretty successful. It's a very, um, how do you call it?
Rewarding.
Rewarding, thank you, sir. It was a very rewarding experience, and it was also pretty interesting, because we were delivering, we were helping to deliver the meals, and they told us ahead of time, "Well, you know, these are senior citizens, a lot of them are hard of hearing." So we went to their homes and were knocking on the doors. I have like 10 soldiers knocking on different doors. 20 minutes later, finally, a little old lady comes out, like, "Yes, can I help you?" You know? So it was pretty funny, and like I said, it was pretty rewarding. Afterwards, we all got together, and we went to IHOP, and we had a nice little breakfast. So just encourage your soldiers to go. I understand it is during block leave, and obviously, it is during Christmas morning, but like I said, if your soldiers can't go, then please encourage them to go. And I do have an alibi. We are going to pick up Christmas trees from LaSalle High School in Pasadena. That's going to be on Friday, the 4th, which we also need volunteers for, and we will be giving out those Christmas trees on Saturday, the 5th of December, that is, at the Arts and Crafts Parking Lot. If we don't give out all of the trees on Saturday, we will be giving the rest of them out on Sunday. And these are by donations only if you would like to give something to the BOSS program. Do I have any questions?
Yeah, to be clear, these trees, 150 trees, are also donated by four families of active military. Again, a great sponsor of the high desert military communities, and it proceeds by donation, much like our car washes will go into the BOSS program down in Florida. And so, it's first come, first served in the Arts and Crafts Center Parking Lot on the 5th. What time's starting?
5:20, my other time.
10:00.
10:00.
10:00 is? 5:00 to end the question.
That was a question for Tom. Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Good morning, Chapel Girls. Commander Chaplain at the chapel. First slide. Our events and our activities for Sunday services, the different groups, religious groups that we have, all is on the website. Next slide, please. Our financial piece started last night. It meets on Monday and Wednesday. We have slots for 60. We had 52 show up, so we still have room for eight more couples that would like to come. Strong Bonds Events, I'm sorry, that's full. We have a wait list of 13, so home duty, you can put your name on the list, but it is full for all the different units. Next slide. Christmas toy program, the chaplain's in charge of the tags are already out. They're located at three locations, at the PX, Post Chapel, Sam Adams. There's a Christmas tree. On that Christmas tree is a tag that lists a child's age and sex. If you would like to participate, please pick up a tag. We'll purchase gifts for them, and then bring the tag back on the gift. We put the tag on the gifts, and then there's donation boxes that are located around the area around the post, and we need those by December 9th so we can take those out to the soldiers and the families.
Yeah, for our call, we had 82 applicants based on the worksheets that were done. And so, if somebody got overlooked, if you have a family in need that missed the cutoff, please bring them, okay? Again, to the chapel for the Awatus Commander. Awatus is the nonprofit organization that's sponsoring this, and we will make sure that we try to address that need, okay? Again, each of the tags have the gender and the age of the child, and we ask the flyers that went out to explain this. We're asking for a contribution of a large gift, a small gift, and a book. It's something in the $30 range now. We're not looking for people to bring in new Huffy bicycles or, you know, $1,000 gifts or something like that, because there's sort of an equity thing here, and so. But at any rate, if somebody did get overlooked, commanders and Command Service Major, please bring that to the Awatus Commander. We still have time to take care of a few more if we need to.
Or just contact us at the chaplain office, and we can take care of it. Next slide, please. PWC is having a single female soldier's celebration dinner on Sunday the 13th from 1700 to 1900. Please contact your unit chaplain or the chapel for more details. Next slide, please. Last slide for the services over the Christmas season. During the block leave or opportunity leave, the Gospel and Protestant services will be combined from the 20th, 27th, and the 3rd, 11:00 at the chapel. And then, the Christmas Eve services, Calvin services at 1700, and the Crossed Services at 1930. Any questions? Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Andrea Woy with Child Youth and School Services. Our youth sports department is offering cheerleading for children 6 to 10. Enrollment has started and will end January 1st. If you are interested, registration can be done at Parent Central Services, Building 109. Next slide. All aboard the Polar Express. The CDC, the Cactus Corner CDC, has extended registration for the December 5th Holiday Shopping Childcare. Registration will end this Friday. We have 37 spaces available at this time. You can register at Parent Central, Building 109. You can make reservations through the CDC or through Parent Central Services. Next slide. Youth Sports is also offering basketball for ages 6 to 18. Enrollment has begun and will end January 1st. Just so you are aware, we are looking for coaches. So if you're interested in coaching, you can stop by our sports department or Parent Central Services, Building 109. If you have any questions, please feel free to give us a call at Parent Central Services. Any questions? Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Josh Lomenez with MWR. So I'll be briefing the sports fitness and community direction slides. The first one we have here is the Resilience Center. The highlight of here is the Winter Wonder Wad and Run on December 12th. It's going to be at Jack River Park. Next slide. At the Moreland Fitness Center, if you guys don't remember, last time, we also briefed the development system. If you guys are interested in doing virtual training with live instructors, this would be perfect for you guys. We have a smaller room set up there, so if you guys want to observe it or just come and check out the machine, feel free to. At the Moreland Fitness Center, Building 322. Next slide. The fitness class and services that we have throughout, we are for sports and fitness. We have our group fitness program, where we have the yoga, Zumba, boot camp, cycling, step. Daily passes are $3, or you can do 10 passes for $25. Purchases available at the Moreland Fitness Center. Next slide. The Winter Wonder Wad and Run, two joint events with the group fitness program and the Resilience Center, Jack River Park, December 12th, 8:00. Registration for both is available at the Resilience Center and at the Moreland Fitness Center. Next slide. Just a heads up, for some January fitness events, we have another wad and another run going on, both on January night, the New Year's Evolution Wad and the Resilience Run. So if you guys are interested in doing some fitness events next year, check that out. Next slide. MWR now offers a belt judo. Classes start November 30th, which is just next week. $50 for registration, which includes two days per week for four weeks, except Fridays. They also are going to offer private lessons, just depending on the instructor availability. So if you have any questions, the number at the bottom, 3803046, or 7720. Next slide. Upcoming closures, the Starsville will be closing 26th November, and scheduled to open in August 2016, due to some upgrades and other renovations. In addition to Starsville closing, just a reminder, the pool is also going to be closing in December. Right now, the date for closure is scheduled for December 18th, and scheduled to reopen in August 2006. Next slide. Outdoor Rec, just their normal services. They also have the land sailing event on December 19th for $30 per person, which if those are interested, if you guys are interested, stop by Outdoor Rec or give that number a phone call. Next slide. They've also got their hiking and rock climbing events. The next one's going to be November 28th, which is this Saturday, so if you guys are interested, check that out. They've also got the top rope on December 6th, Alcanyon hike, December 13th, and the Odessa Canyon hike on December 27th. Next slide. Desert Discovery also has a future planned. If you're not into the Black Friday sales, November 27th, they have a trip to the Calico Mountains. In December, they have the inscription canyon trip on December 5th, and Calico Mountains on December 30th. Next slide. Okay, any questions? Thank you, guys.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Janet Ford. I'm a special events coordinator for MWR. We're going to talk about Winter Fest and the tree lighting ceremony that's coming up. On Friday, December 11th, will be the tree lighting. It will be in town center. We start next week. There'll be 17,000 lights on the tree. Also, Rick Creed, our Gold Star ads of the tree, will go to music. We're going to have hot chocolate and cookies, and the unit postcards that'll go out on today, should go out. Units can come pick up their 4x6, and it'll be painted. They do a postcard. The first place gets $750 for the unit funds, $500 for second place, and $250 for third. So, and all that will be given out on the Friday at the tree lighting ceremony, and it starts at 17:30. Next slide. Winter Fest, it continues on Saturday. We'll have all the vendors in the parking lot at Sam Adams on Friday night, continues on Saturday. On Saturday, starting at 10:00 until 1:00, is brunch for Santa. That happens in the Sam Adams. And then, from 2:00 to 4:00, we have pictures with Santa in front of the Christmas tree. It's encouraged to bring your own camera. Am I held a little? Do as many pictures as you want. And then, also, from 4:00 to 6:00, we're going to have the Frozen Room inside of Sam Adams. All the favorite characters will be there again this year for your children to take pictures, plus all the vendors. It's going to be a great time. Next slide. Also, the next slide gives an hourly of the two days and the timeline for the events. So we're hoping everybody makes it, lots of vendors. We've got about 50 right now. We can still have room for a few more if you know someone that wants to be a vendor. And any questions? Thank you. Have a good day, everybody.
Welcome, everybody. My name is Kai Heer. I'm a commissary officer here at Fort Irwin, and I'm going to tell you some things about the commissary and save you some money. First thing, we'll have a sidewalk sale. This is my baby. I went out in the industry, and I said I want 40% or above. So, the sidewalk sale will be December 1st to the 3rd. We will have savings of 40% or above on cereal, on dog food, on coffee, and various items throughout the store. Also, my meat department's going to have riblets. You get 10-pound riblet for 40% off, and also, folks will have 50% off on select items. To lead into that, we're going to have the Black Friday Fabaganda Sale. A Black Friday Fabaganda Sale will start on 27th through the 29th. There again, we're going to have sales up to about 50% off. There'll be marks throughout the store with little black tags. Those are the things on the Fabaganda Sale. So please come out for those. Next slide. Okay, next slide.
Go back one, go back two. Go back to, there you go. There you go.
There we go. All right. The best gift, I think, a gift is a gift card. Gift cards are wonderful. It's an opportunity to give food to those all over the world. Gift cards come in sets of 25 and 50. Now, the best part about the gift card is, you don't have to be a commissary patron or authorized shopper to buy them. You can buy them, put your commissary in some to your relatives, neighbors, friends all over the world. You do have to be an authorized shopper to use them, but not to buy them. They have 25 and 50%. Please look forward to that. Coming up next is also our produce sales. A reminder that we had a produce in November. The most produce wins a gift certificate. Program runs for all through November, and you'll turn in your receipts on the 1st and And you'll turn your receipts on the 1st and the 3rd with your name and code, and we don't have to be present to win. We'll have it drawn on the 4th. And we'll call you up and let you know if you're not there, who won, but produce won in the month of November. Okay. And just before I came out of here, I got a word from Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus. And they told me that on December 11th, from the hours of 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., they will be visiting the Ford Army Commissary, bringing children out, a great opportunity to get photos and heaven joys to kick off the holiday with Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus. Any questions? Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Tina, the Rainsville Manager here for Irwin. And we have a Black Friday sale. Just clarify that, it's Friday the 27th of November. We're gonna open the mall doors at 2:00 a.m. We're gonna have some games, the DJs, some free coffee and cookies. Iceberg Basil's gonna be open for breakfast and we're gonna open the mall, the store at 4:00 a.m. Next slide. These are happy hours for the food facilities. These signs are posted inside the food facilities. These are for the month of December. Any questions?
Let me take a few off.
Just a couple of announcements from your local friends with Cavalry Regiment. Tomorrow, 111 is doing their car show in the PX Parking Lot at 10 o'clock. It's real popular with the troopers, spectators are welcome. This is a fundraising event. Not in a deck, but briefed last town hall. Just a reminder to everybody, the Spouses' Spur Ride is going to happen on the 3rd of December. 0700 at Fritzfield. We did one of our fly line POs yesterday. We're only tracking about 70 spouses across the post. Last year we did this, we had almost 150, 200 spouses showed up. It is gonna be a fantastic event. It is open to the entire post and we highly encourage all spouses on the post to participate if you want to. 0700 Fritzfield. It'll last about four hours and it'll be a fun event. It is advertised everywhere. And to make it more convenient, DFAC 2 has sign up sheets and all on the table, so... DFAC 1, thank you, thank you. DFAC 1, sign up sheets. So if you're in there eating lunch, then you can sign up and it'll be a good event. So I encourage you, encourage you to come out. Thanks.
Good morning, House Command, this is Vassas Club. And just a quick note, we had our annual event. We finished October this last weekend and we exceeded our expectations. We went over $2,000 than we did last year. Our profit was $9,136.49. So I just wanna thank the community again for all the donations that we had donated this year. We, if you're doing a Christmas party this year, don't forget about the Santa suits and the supplies and decorations that we have at the thrift store. Next slide. We're having our next luncheon here at Navy Basin. It's gonna be January 21st from 11:00 to 1:30. Our SCPs will be open from January 3rd through January 17th. And we're doing a fashion show at the Barstow Atlas. Next slide. Same day for our Rocket Days Casino Night on February 27th. There will be more to come after the New Year. Any questions? That's all for me, thanks.
Again, a quick alibi, my slide did not make the deck. There should be a few of them out with the command teams tomorrow, right here, same location we're in right now. 11:30 to 1300 is the Native American Heritage Month Celebration. 11:30 to 1300 open up to the community. It's children-friendly, we will have a guest speaker. Actually, some good entertainment here. We have a local from Rancho Pocamanga, hoop dancer, dance for presidents, queens, et cetera, et cetera. Also, we have educational materials and a food sampling, which everybody always loves at the end of it. So again, open to the community, 11:30 to 1300 right here, same base. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I had a couple of quick, long-range things. I hope to look for some questions and then turn it over to the commanding general. Next one. Couple highlights, as you heard, Colonel Jacoby has discussed the car show tomorrow. Also, for Thanksgiving, we have a total of 91 soldiers and family members loading buses at 10 o'clock at the Post Theater for a ride down to Lake Arrowhead, where four families of active military is gonna present a Thanksgiving meal. Brought us and a day or afternoon of activities. It's a great opportunity. 10 o'clock is when we pull, right?
For Yorba Linda.
For Yorba Linda. I apologize, it's not Lake Arrowhead, it's at Yorba Linda. So, but at any rate, looking forward to that. So we sent notes out to the command sergeants majors of the installation for the length of time for those 91, we've been collecting names for them. So we'll make sure that we have a great time. Next one. Next thing, as the regiment commander commented, we will have the Spouses' Spur Ride into that Lomond's planning calendar and the slide that's up on the NTC webpage in the staff when we post it to the webpage. Also, I wanna highlight the 11th ACR, long walk home to Barstow on the 14th and 15th. We'll make sure we get that back into this slide as well as the slide deck. Also, I wanna highlight the Fire Explorers. We have a number of Fire Explorers across the Southern California area coming up next week for a lot of opportunities, some trainings overnight and whatnot up here in the High Desert. Great opportunity. We'll do a presentation of awards next Sunday before they head back south. The Christmas train is scheduled for the 13th. We are full. Thank you for the support from the community. We have 120 folks that will be joining us on that. It's a tradition here in the High Desert, riding from San Bernardino to Victorville to Barstow, a Christmas train activity. And then also wanna highlight the Christmas meals will be served on the 15th and 17th at those two locations, Building 271 and 254 consecutively in those days. Encourage you, encourage your soldiers to come on out and take part in that. Next slide, last slide. Also, wanna highlight on here, a number of activities starting to be planned in January. Rose Bowl game in Pasadena. We're collecting from the command sergeants major the interest level and those that will be in the community to be able to take advantage of it. Last year, we received almost 900 free tickets. And these tickets generally run $150 a pop. $150 a pop donated to us. But if we ask for a ticket, we have to use that ticket. We're not gonna hand out 900 tickets and only have 200 people show up. We're working on the possibility of a charter bus or using TNP buses or something like that for small fee so that we can get folks down there and they can save on the parking spot hunt that is usually nightmarish in the Pasadena area. So more to follow on that. If you did come out and participate in it, this SAG Day, we had California Fight League conduct a UFC fight televised on cable here. And it was actually 500 to 600 soldiers and family members at that, at Freedom Fitness. An outstanding event put on by your MWR and BOSS, as well as a number of other teams like DES that took part in that and made sure it was a great event. So we thought that was a roaring success and we're gonna do it again. We're trying to set that up in the spring. But we'd like to televise the fights as well, so that's also highlighted. And there's one of our headline fights scheduled for, I believe it's Shockwave, right, Mary?
Yeah.
Yeah, at Shockwave is where we'll be showing that. So we continue to keep that out to the community. Okay, any questions from the group that I can answer at this time before I turn it over to the commanding general?
Just a quick question, sir. I saw that Strike Zone's gonna be closed starting in August. I do remember in the past, they've always opened up for New Years for family members and things like that. Is there gonna be another facility open for individuals that might wanna have a family activity for the New Years?
Good recommendation. We'll take a look at that, see what we can do. Again, Shockwave is not a soldier-only. It is a family-friendly facility. We'll make sure we're trying to do something for the New Years. But yes, the Strike Zone does close effective Thursday this week for major renovations that we have to get done. There's some safety issues in that facility right now that I can't keep it running the way it is. Okay? So we'll take a look at that. Good suggestion. Any other questions from the group? Okay, sir, over here. Command Sergeant Major, not too many.
Hey, good morning to everybody. First and foremost, I say thank you for taking your time. Some volunteers and some volunteers out here in the audience. But it's important that we all come out here and learn from this plethora and the different briefers and information presented. What I ask of you is just be a good steward of that information. Our JOB is, our job is to go back into our formations and ensure that, you know, the soldiers and families you represented by your presence here today, that that information is being passed to them. And please do temperature checks. One of our jobs is, you know, involve members of this community is to go and do a temperature check to see what soldiers know. So just, you know, great conversation. Please ask them, what's going on? Hey, what... Great question would be, let's go bowling next weekend and see what their response is. And if they say Roger, that's our major, then we probably do inform them a little bit better. But, you know, it kinda highlights a perspective. The perspective of most of everybody in this room is that there are countless opportunities and events to keep families engaged on this installation. That perspective is perhaps not the same as we transition down all the way to the soldier. And it just, to me, it just highlights the, you know, one of our many jobs is to continue to beat the drum of the information and pass it on as to what is going on. There's, I don't know what the transition or what the break is, but it's just a continuous effort. And I just ask that we all partake in that. The last thing I'll say is just about the command involvement in the holidays. We need to have a plan that addresses absolutely every single soldier. Every soldier needs to have a plan as to what, when, where, how. What's your Thanksgiving look like? Talk to me about that. That's every single... So everyone, because what we don't want is, you know, you ask, hey, what'd you do for Thanksgiving last year? Yeah, me and a battle buddy split a turkey MRE. Or tortilla MRE. But it happens. And it's, we can prevent that. You can prevent it because you have awareness of what, you know, many events that are going on. And also encourage the leadership to embrace soldiers during that time period and get them involved. So just ask. I'd ask that you get involved and discover what every single member of your formation is doing. The regiment, that might be a bit of a challenge. You have quite a few individuals,